Council meeting for May 15, 2017. Could you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda tonight is Item B, the Consent Agenda. Do I have any questions on the Consent Agenda?
I move adoption of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Public comments, all in favor, all opposed, seeing none. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Item C, Public Comments. At this time, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight, this is your opportunity. Do we have any public comments? Okay, if you could come up to the podium and just push that button so the green light's on so everybody can hear you. Yeah, give your name and street address. Right on the microphone.
There we go. And I apologize, I thought the budget was for this council meeting and not on the committee agenda. I would've been here earlier, so I do apologize. I have documents to hand out, and I'm not going to read them. Is that okay? But for reference for you.
You just want, just to give your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, you did ask me to do that, and I can follow directions. I'm Karen Hawks. I'm the Chair of RSU 22 School Board. I live at 130 Miller Road, rural Hamden. So I, anything else you need me to say?
No, that's good.
Okay. Do you need me to distribute, can I distribute these?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So there's three different packets. So this is, this is information that we plan to distribute onto our website as well as to present at our school board meeting on Wednesday. So for those of you attending that meeting, this will be something you've heard before. But I thought it would be important to come here and share this information. A lot of it you already know, if you've attended a Budget Committee meeting before, you might consider it quote-unquote "a talking point." But I do think it's important that we have this outlined in letter format to both our town leaders as well as to the residents of our four communities in RSU 22. What I did want to point out, and I believe that the part I missed was regarding Article 20, maybe. I did want to read two paragraphs to you, and then I will respect your time and make a quick exit. But certainly if you have any questions. Regan Nichols is here. Regan Nichols is our Principal for Reeds Brook, but she has also been hired for Assistant Superintendent position, so she'll be getting that role for next fiscal year. We're very excited to welcome her into that role. And then Wally, Wally Frazier is our Vice Chair, so, and a Hamden resident. So I wanted to read two excerpts, if you don't mind, bear with me. Regarding the warrant language, and I'm not going to reread that language, I think you're probably very familiar with it. "The Board understands the challenges our town officials are facing. We are committed to helping relieve the local burden, and this will remain a priority for the Board if additional state funds are received. The flexibility of Article 20 ensures we are able to direct funds in response to the current context at that time. If additional state funds are received, we will reach out to our town officials to ensure there is transparency and discussion prior to any Board decision or action as it relates to Article 20. The process of creating a budget that meets the needs of our student population while being respectful of the demands placed on our taxpayers is not taken lightly. The Board is committed to accountability and transparency, and we have made noted strides of progress in recent years in response to express concerns from town leadership and members of our communities. The Board has a responsibility to consider and listen to all community stakeholders. Our constituents in all four towns have expressed very diverse opinions and desires, and a respectful discourse continues as we move forward. We look forward to continued correspondence between our four RSU 22 communities and the citizens they represent, as well as participation at our regular Board meetings. It is the position of the Board that progress is only achievable and that positive change is only attainable when stakeholders work together in the spirit of collaboration, honesty, and transparency." And I'd like to point out that the Board is fairly new. We only have, I think, two or three members who have served more than one term. All of us are in our first term, most of us. We are committed to working together. We responded to some of your concerns. Unfortunately, change does not take, or change does take time. So we have made progress, but there's still a lot of progress to do, and I hope that we can work together and have an open chain of communication so that we're not at, coming to a head all the time, but hopefully next spring we can approach this even better than we did this year. I understand you have concerns, and I am very open to hearing those concerns moving forward. So I appreciate your time, happy to answer any questions you may have, and if there are questions I can't answer, we can certainly find the answer and get back to you.
Thank you. Questions, everybody else?
I've got a quick question. As you talk about Article 20, I guess my question to you is why are you budgeting for a decrease in state funding when we've been told by leadership in Augusta there will be no decrease?
We have been told by a representative of Augusta.
Right.
But that has yet to be guaranteed in Augusta.
Okay, so...
Unfortunately, he does not hold all the keys.
But that's best information you have, and we do our budget with the best information that we have. So, at the end of the day, the budget, you, there's no decrease in state funding to you. Article 20 says you can do it in three different ways, or a combination of all three. You're going to communicate to us what you're going to do with those funds, but I hope you, in the school board, remember that these are not your funds. These are the funds of the taxpayer, and those funds should be used to relieve the burden on the taxpayer rather than spend more than you need. And the reason I say that is if you look this year, you have a million-dollar positive variance in your budget, a million dollars. So I'm hoping, to your point, you're new to the Board, there are a lot of people that are new to the Board, I'm hoping that change happens because year over year, it has continued year over year, we see the budget, we see a positive variance of millions of dollars, we see monies that, additional monies, two years ago, I think it was $200,000 in additional monies was given by the state, and that remained within the school budget and was not given back to the taxpayer. So I'm just putting these things out here with the hope that you remember this when it comes time to making, having discussions around this, because again, these monies belong to the taxpayer. And I just want to remember that. Thank you.
Yeah, I certainly will invite Regan up if she wants to add any, in response to that, but I can tell you that I'm a taxpayer too, and I invite you to go look at like maybe my third or fourth Board meeting that I had at RSU 22, and I went and had a very honest and open debate with one of my fellow Board members who explained his position on taxes, and that he was very willing to pay more in taxes because it increased his property value. And I have a very different stance. I'm a middle-income family, and that does hurt me and my family. So I appreciate that you are making that defense at the council on behalf of me and other taxpayers. There's a couple of things I think that probably, I just want to point out, we're shifting, we have a million approximately in our unallocated funds, but over a half a million of that is going into FY '18 to offset local cost sharing. So I think it's 540, it's outlined in the letter. And that 200,000-plus that we received in fiscal year 17, was it 16 or 17? 16, we're in 17 now. That, we weren't able to put that anywhere because we didn't have a warrant language allowing us to do so. So we did put in over 400,000 of unallocated funds for fiscal year 17 to help offset local cost share, and obviously that 200-plus thousand we received from the state was put into contingency or unallocated funds. So that's, I'm not sure if I'm making sense. Now, I'm going to be under 100% honest with you, I'm not a banker, and I'm not going to pretend to be. That's not my role, but certainly I can speak from a broad level, and that's my understanding. And we won't make any decisions, it's a discussion. You might not agree with it, but it will be public, and this letter's public, and it's in our minutes, and it's in these minutes. So I'm making that commitment to you.
Perfect.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, move on. Go ahead, Dee. The Saturday at 9:00 AM is Spring Cleanup. Kind of got rained out last weekend, so we're shooting for this Saturday, 9:00 AM here at the Community Center down by the police station, Community Room, and after the cleanup is complete, there'll be a barbecue here in the parking lot. So we invite everybody in town that would like to come participate in cleaning up and making our town beautiful. We would appreciate all the help we can get. So the next item on the agenda tonight is Public Hearings, our Proposed Zoning Ordinance Amendments, and at this time I would ask Karen Cullen, if she are Town Planner, to come up and present this item.
So this is, we're in the middle of this public hearing. It started at the May 1 Town Council meeting, and this is a continuation of that public hearing. At the May 1 meeting, there were a number of issues that were brought up, and after that, the Planning Board had a meeting this past Wednesday, May 10, and they discussed some suggested modifications to the amendments that were in front of Town Council. Planning Board has voted unanimously to recommend Town Council to make the following modifications. One, allow accessory apartments to be constructed in detached accessory structures such as a garage. This can either be an existing structure or a new structure. Two, delete the 800-square-foot maximum size for accessory apartments. These units are still limited in size to 40% of the square footage of the single-family house to ensure they remain subordinate to the main house. The 40% limit applies regardless of whether the accessory apartment is part of the existing house, in addition to the house, or within an existing accessory structure, or within a new accessory structure. And three, increase the allowable number of bedrooms from one to two. This will allow a spouse or other caregiver to remain close to a relative at the end stages of life. The Planning Board is cognizant of the fact that most property owners will not allow nuisance issues to arise by use of an accessory apartment on their property. The fact that one of the requirements for these units is that the owner live in one of the units is an important factor in the Board's decision to support these modifications. The Planning Board also requested that the Town Attorney review the proposed amendments in regard to the Fair Housing Act. A letter on this was received this afternoon, which I believe you've all received. The bottom line of his letter is that the proposed amendments do not violate the Fair Housing Act. This is due to the fact that they do not explicitly exclude families with children. The Town Attorney also pointed out that we need to modify the language of the existing definition of accessory use or structure, which explicitly prohibits the occupancy of any accessory structure as habitable space. He has opined that since this definition is closely related to the amendments at hand and failure to modify it at this time will create a conflict within the zoning ordinance, and given the extensive discussion of these amendments at public meetings, it is acceptable to add this housekeeping change to the amendments in front of Town Council tonight. Therefore, should Council decide to adopt these amendments tonight, your motion should be, as submitted in Version 7 tonight, including the items just discussed.
Thank you. Any questions for Town Planner? Counsel McAvoy?
Not really a question, just a statement. The, I think it's important that people understand that even if they convert an accessory structure, an existing one certainly, that they still have to be, meet the building and energy codes. So it's not like you can just go out and, you know, stick something in a garage and call it an accessory, you know, apartment or something, that's not the case. You still will have to meet, you know, the building and energy codes.
Yes, thank you, yes. And another reminder is that these units do require a conditional use permit from the Planning Board, and yes, they will have to get a building code, I mean, a building permit from the Code Enforcement Office or in order to be constructed.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion?
Is there, can I have a public comment?
There will be, but I have to have a motion, and then I can have public comment, and then we can vote on the motion after, okay?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amendments to the zoning ordinance related to accessory apartment to Sections 3.7.4, 3.7.6, 7.2, and adding new section 4.2.5 as submitted in Version 7 tonight, which include modifications to the proposal discussed at the opening of the public hearing on May 1, 2017, to wit, allowing accessory apartments in detached accessory structures, eliminating the 800-square-foot maximum size, increasing the number of bedrooms allowed to two, and deleting the second sentence of the definition of accessory use or structure.
Second.
Okay, now, is there anybody for public comments?
Alison Bearabee, 2017, May 19. I appreciate this chance to speak to the Board after attending the Planning Board meeting last week. I believe that some important discussions occurred, and that proposed changes forwarded to the Town Council continue to have some concern, one specifically. I'm still not clear on why a zoning change, which only affects residential aid, is necessary, what the governmental interest for changing...
Oh, did I forget to, oh, sorry about that. What the governmental interest for changing the currently existing zoning was. To be clear, the accessory apartment zoning change is more restrictive than the current zoning allowed, allowing conversion of a single-family residence, and it only affects those within, adversely affects those within residential aid zoning. Let me see if I want to say that. Towns must provide that the actions of a zoning committee in practice legitimate, that they forward a legitimate bona fide governmental interest, and that no alternatives would serve that interest with being less discriminatory or restrictive. And courts have held that zoning regulations are permissible if it is reasonable and not arbitrary, if it bears a reasonable and substantial relation to the public, safety, health, comfort, morals, and general welfare of the community, and if it means that they are reasonably necessary for the accomplishment of the purpose of the zoning. So again, I'm not sure on the history of how this zoning that is more restrictive came to be as opposed to the current zoning, which allows for conversion of resident, single-family residences, residences within Zone A to two-family residences. The proposal to limit accessory apartments to two bedrooms, even though there are existing building codes that provide for minimum size of bedrooms, is an unnecessary provision. As I reviewed, as I reviewed the purpose at the last Planning Board, the original zoning, third purpose of the original zoning change was to provide much-needed housing stock for smaller households. And as I discussed at the last Town Council meeting, this statement can be seen as having a disproportionate impact on a protected class, namely familial status. I propose that the Council consider striking any mention of the maximum limit of bedrooms. The provisions in the new accessory apartment ordinance already provides that no more than 40% of the single-family square footage shall be used in the accessory apartment. The building code already provides for the maximum, I mean, for the minimum size of any such bedrooms. So it's redundant and unnecessary. I also recommend that the word "smaller household" be stricken from the purposes for this zoning change, namely the accessory zoning change. And I would like my statements to be added into tonight's minutes. Are there any questions?
Would the Town Planner like to address any of those questions?
In really, I mean, in regards to the level of restriction on this compared to what's current in the Residential Aid District, currently, a two-family dwelling is only permitted as a conversion of an existing single-family house, and it's limited in size to 50% of the existing house, and must look like, you know, there must not be any changes to make it look like a duplex. It's supposed to continue to look like a single-family house. In that regard, going from 50% of the square footage of the existing house to 40% is more restrictive. The primary reason for that is that in order to be subordinate, it has to be less than 50%, or you could make it 49% and still be subordinate, but 50%, technically, you're not subordinate. This is supposed to be an accessory apartment, it's not supposed to be a second full-size dwelling unit. The purpose of the Residential Aid District, it's pretty clear that this is supposed to be for single-family residences. It's supposed to be the primary area for single-family residences in Hamden, and the Planning Board had discussed and were very vehement that two-family residences was not something that they were willing to recommend within the Residential Aid District. So the only way that somebody can have two units is to do an accessory apartment, whether you call it what it is today, or whether you call it what we're proposing in these amendments. These amendments would also be applicable across the Board in all the other residential districts. All the other residential districts do allow two-family dwellings, so people in those situations would have a choice between doing a two-family dwelling or doing an accessory. I understand that the building code, the next version of the building code, is going to have some changes to what's required on the building code side of things for an accessory apartment, such as firewalls and so on and so forth, so it could end up being less expensive for someone to actually do an accessory unit instead of a full-blown two-family unit under the building code when that does get adopted. And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Thank you. Town Manager Jennings?
I would add one point of fact, which is related to the market study that was done earlier this year that showed a very clear trend towards smaller households, and specifically made the point that the current housing stock in the town of Hamden is not necessarily well-suited to smaller households or particularly seniors aging in place. So the reason for that purpose in the ordinance is actually to advance an identified governmental interest.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel Marble?
Well, all of this started, in my recollection, in a response to citizens' requests that we're not formal or complete initially. And Ms. Bearabee, I fully respect your involvement and also understand that we're probably not going to reach a conclusion that's going to meet every need of yours. But having said that, and for the record, this has been a very positive experience. This has brought some citizens together with the Town and a Planning Board in a process that kept informing itself through each level of review and information. It brought out the expertise of the Town Manager and the Town Planner, it brought in legal opinion, and I think ultimately, it's at least my hope, but I think it's going to happen, that the result does meet the needs of more people in this community, including both seniors having an appropriate place to live, or young adult children coming back to the area to work in the area before they can afford a home of their own. So for my part, I want to thank you for your part in the process, and recognize all the work, the good work that staff did.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody? Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to the next item is the Proposed Fees Ordinance Amendment, Article 1. You want to set that up on the screen?
Sure. I have a brief presentation on the sewer, so I, we could go through the other fees and then go to sewer, or we could start with sewer and then go back to the other proposed amendments. But if we start with sewer, it shouldn't take long for me to get it started.
Okay, yeah, just...
Okay, so this is a very brief presentation, just 10 slides, so I'll keep it brief. A couple of these slides are duplicates from the budget presentation two weeks ago, but for those watching who may not have viewed that presentation, it's important background. So, brief presentation, context for rate review, brief history, how did it come to this, proposed FY '18 sewer budget expenditures, review of proposed sewer rate, council deliberation, public comment, and I do want to remind you, this is a public hearing, as you know, and that allows you to take action tonight, or you could always choose to continue to a date certain if the council doesn't reach a conclusion. So a number of factors are affecting FY '18 sewer costs. As you know, the, because of the rate change that was adopted last February, the sewer was self-supporting in FY '17, meaning the rates did cover the operating expenses, but that's based on a roughly seven-year payback of the inter-fund transfer to the General Fund, and there was discussion at the February rate hearing last year of whether that 100,000 a year toward that deficit was the right number. But what you have before you in the proposed FY '18 budget is a continuation of 100,000 back to the General Fund. The sewer budget includes proposed revenues and costs and a proposed capital program, and the sewer has taken on new capital obligations since last year's rate hearing. Specifically, there was the borrowing of just under $300,000 in order to pay overdue bills to the City of Bangor, which dated back to FY '15. Actually, I think they dated to FY '14 that were unpaid. And we will close tomorrow on a loan for our share of contractually obligated capital improvements to the Bangor wastewater treatment plant. Right now, the sewer, in the proposed sewer budget, it does for the first time propose dedicated sewer personnel. I expect that to be a major focus of discussion tonight, but as I think everybody knows, right now, in the FY '17 budget, there's a $60,000 of the sewer revenue that comes in is transferred to the General Fund annually. That's intended as an offset of staff time that's paid out of the General Fund toward the sewer. But what's proposed is, for the first time, that there would be a dedicated staff resource to the sewer. So a little more detail, we will close the loan tomorrow for the capital improvements. That's going to add about 41,000 of the annual debt service, and that is in addition to the roughly 40 and a half thousand of debt service that was taken on with the... with the loan closed in January. So, just between those two issues, you're talking about eighty-two thousand dollars. There is a potential need for a referendum in November of this year regarding debt authorization for the Grist Mill Bridge. There are other projects that are also on the drawing board, but the Grist Mill Bridge is one that we have no choice on because of main DOT schedule, so we're still looking at how that could be financed, but it may require borrowing. Just the engineering costs, we received an estimate recently for thirty-three thousand just for the engineering for that bridge. So, the sewer cannot escape the past, and I'm really very sympathetic to sewer rate payers, because the fact of the need for rates is partially to do with what's going on today, but it is primarily to do with what has gone on for a very long time. So, again, these charts are not going to be new information to the council, but this is the net operating loss that the sewer funds experienced from fiscal year four to fiscal year fifteen, with the largest loss in FY15 of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars lost in a single budget year. So that's kind of what I inherited when I got here, a real mess. Sewer due to other funds, this is the year-end statement of what the sewer owes to the general fund, and I extended this to reflect the recent FY16 audit. The year-end deficit was six hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars at the end of June of last year. It will be that same amount at the end of June of this year. We did an additional inter-fund transfer early this year, because our debt service comes due in the fall, we needed to borrow money, but we will, once these fourth-quarter billings, which are currently coming in, come in, we'll be able to pay off the current year's transfers, so this current year will be level in terms of inter-fund transfers. And in fact, it should, it'll go down, actually, a hundred thousand because of the current year's budget. So it'll be five fifty-one at the end of June. As the council knows, but perhaps people watching from home, this might help clarify. One of the budgeting challenges for the sewer, one of the major costs, aside from debt service, by far the most significant cost we incur is the bills we receive from Bangor, where all of our wastewater discharges. And what this chart shows is the significant variance in the amount of flow that Bangor is tracking at the city line. That's what those blue bars indicate, is the volume of flow that is the basis of the invoice we receive. The red bars indicate the volume of flow that we are billing our customers. So you can see over the seven budget years up on the screen, the volume of flow that we were billing our customers for was remarkably steady for those seven years, but there was a tremendous variation in the amount of flow Bangor was tracking at the city line. Now, the reason for that is called inflow and infiltration, or INI, and it's a major concern of the sewer, and it's something that, part of getting the system back on healthy ground financially allows us to, for the first time, put resources toward finding out where that inflow and infiltration is happening, so we can rectify that and bring it closer to even. I will say, just as I said two weeks ago at the budget hearing, INI is part of every sewer system in this country. It's not something you're ever going to get to a point where there's none of it, but you do not want to be at a place where as much as sixty percent of the volume that we're being billed for is not actually coming out of sewer customers, at least not in a way that's billed.
Do we know what an average is for other municipalities? In other words, we know we'll never get rid of it, but there should be some sort of, you know, acceptable rate of flow?
I'm not aware of anything numerical like that. I can certainly look into it, but I think, you know, what we're seeing here is, especially, and this is in the wetter years, it does kind of track precipitation, so more rain means more water seeping in, and that comes out at the other end, and we get billed for it.
Commissioner Jennings, quick question.
For me and rate payers, the red bar showing the amount the town is billing sewer users is remarkably steady. Is that driven directly by water consumption?
Yes, with the exception of about fifteen customers who are on wells and things like that, all of the billing is based on the water.
So, in general, water consumption has been flat for as many years as that chart shows.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, this next chart basically translates the prior chart to dollars. The prior chart was based on volumes, this is based on dollars, and you can see that the monthly charge from Bangor to Hamden has been all over the map, as low as thirty-three hundred dollars a month, and as high as thirty-six thousand dollars a month. And as you know, there's been a significant lag time, typically, six to eight months, as many as ten months, before we even receive the invoice, so budgeting has been an enormous challenge. Progress has been made in this regard. Bangor has made some specific changes with their personnel to allow us to get bills more timely, and so you can see we now have data through February of this year, which is not that long ago, so we're doing better in that regard. You can also see that the, for reasons that I suspect are to do with precipitation, that period of FY15 was when the charges were trending by far the highest, and so, I make that point because the budgeted, the proposed FY18 budget takes the three-year average charge of thirteen thousand, five eighty-four, which you can see right there, and it multiplies it by twelve. That's what you have in that treatment charge in the budget. If you compress that and take two years of data, the two-year average is eleven thousand, six ninety-four. That's a slightly more optimistic budget. What you have is a conservative budget in terms of the treatment costs, but that change alone, which I think would be objectively reasonable, especially if everyone understands the risk that we could go back to getting thirty-six thousand dollar a month bills, but that change alone would reduce twenty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine from the budget. So, some summary points, getting to the bottom of the wide range of recorded flows is top priority and is now underway. We've engaged our engineer to look at the accuracy of the meter pit, first of all, to make sure that's correct, and we also have retained Ted Berry Company to do closed-circuit TV of the entire system, which will allow us to identify areas of inflow and infiltration and potential illegal connections of storm drains or roof drains into sewer, so we can shut those down. Regardless of the findings, INI is known to be a significant problem. We are putting in grant funds due in just a couple of weeks, and we're seeking a couple of hundred thousand dollars of federal money, and we're going to put our best foot forward on that, and if that comes through, that would offset the costs of update to our CSO master plan, so that we're going to do the best we can on that. And, basically, we need to continue to both manage the sewer, you know, on a sound financial basis, but also devote resources toward operations and maintenance, which is something that has not always happened in the past. So, that's the end of the presentation. I do have, as well, an Excel sheet that has some illustrative kind of formulas and impacts, so maybe I'll step up and transfer to the. All right, so you have in your packet the proposed sewer budget, and so, holding all of those expenses as they are, in order to, that shows a deficit based on the current rate. If we hold the current rate equal, but the expense budget is approved as is, that would have a deficit over the course of the year of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. So I understand, you know, the council could change the proposed expenditures, but if you hold that equal, in order to balance that budget, you would need a sewer rate, it would need to increase from nine seventy-four to eleven sixty. That's what would be required. And what we have here is, I've got on the separate tab the actual budget that you have in your packet, and so, if we adjust, let's take, for example, the treatment service charge. So I think eleven, six eighty-four, I believe, was what I said. So if we change that, that's going to automatically go through, and that reduces the projected deficit to one thirty-four, seven fifty-four. So, basically, the point of setting this up is, if the council says, hey, what about if we strike this? What about if we do that? I can make those changes, and we can see that, what that would mean. And then, I've also got tables showing the impact of a rate change on your typical sewer customer, based on those, the median usage, the twenty-fifth percentile usage, or the seventy-fifth percentile usage. So at, if it went to eleven sixty, that would be a nineteen percent increase, and that would add, your median usage customer is currently spending five sixty-eight, forty per year. No, I'm sorry, they're currently four seventy-seven and twenty-six. That would go to five sixty-eight, forty, for an increase of ninety-one dollars over the course of the year. So I can get into playing around with these things, but why don't we get into some discussion and then see where it goes.
Councilor Marble?
More of a comment, self-disclosure. I'm sitting here getting what I think is sound information from town staff, and then get to the point of saying, how do we pay bills we owe without, you know, overburdening, in this case, not only taxpayers, but rate payers? And so, earlier this afternoon, I was thinking, I can't, you know, get clear on every single detail on this budget. It's just not in my nature. I don't have the capacity. I get the general trends, I understand the categories, the numbers in general make sense to me. We had a rate increase last year. We mentioned that that would not be the end of things. It certainly isn't. And I was trying to think of a way to get to the right place without making it too steep this year, and I was thinking, what if we did ten percent this year and next year, rather than nineteen right now? But the more I think about that, with things like the Grist Mill Bridge coming, and the whole idea of how we got to this place in the first place, it's bad-tasting stuff, but I think that, for me, we, yeah, it is. Figuratively, I meant. I'm going to be reluctantly supportive of what I think is doing the right thing, and supporting the numbers as you're laying them out with a projected nineteen percent increase.
Any other? Councilor McPike?
Yes, following along with what Dennis had to say, I guess as we get into it this summer, we start getting into infiltration and start looking at our lines that we have, I'm concerned, because I haven't heard what takes place after that. If we have severe problems with our lines, it's quite obvious that we've got to do something, and now I'm getting concerned about the budget of eighteen, as to what is this going to cost, or what could we potentially be looking at there? That's going to be, again, thrown back on with the thirty-three thousand dollars just for the engineering costs. So, I don't know if there's, there's probably no magic number that you can come up with, but maybe the Public Works Director has some sort of an idea of where do we go? What do we do with this? What takes place if we, in fact, have these problems?
I would invite Director Courier to address that. It's a concern he's raised to me, in terms of what I think he feels is an excessively lean expense budget. I don't want to throw you under the bus, but you'll throw yourself there next, so. So, no, he's come to me again and again, said, look, exactly what you said, Councilor McPike, we're going to do this INI, we're going to find issues, we're then going to need to go fix them. We need resources to do that. This budget does not provide for that. This just provides for the diagnostic. So, we are really behind the curve on this issue, and that's why I emphasize the history. It's painful. I know it's painful for you all who have to take a vote, and it's certainly painful for the rate payers who have to pay the bill, and it's a bit galling that current rate payers are bearing the cost of years of under-budgeting, but that's where we find ourselves. I will say, this is, you know, this is thin gruel, but one of the bonds is paid off at the end of FY18, so that nineteen ninety-six sewer loan, we have ninety-six thousand of debt service in the proposed budget. That will come out for FY19, but as we know, between Grist Mill or whatever else, it will, you know, I don't want to suggest that the budget's going to go down, but at least it's, you know, that's one number that will come out of next year's budget. But Sean, if you would elaborate a bit on some of the, kind of the need for a sewer capital reserve, which at this point doesn't exist?
I'm very sympathetic to the rate payers of the sewer. I understand that those large increases are very traumatic to endure. It is on. My concern is that we haven't been where we needed to be for years, and because of that, we are lagging on some of the maintenance items that we need to maintain and address. The sooner we can pay back the general fund, the sooner that we can actually start allocating those funds to real repairs in the system and take care of the inflow and infiltration, and reduce the cost for treatment. I believe that if we, capital going forward is going to be extremely important. Bangor's going to have some serious money to spend on their sewer system, per their consent decree. They are legally bound to spend X amount of dollars in the next twenty years on a long-term control plan, and some of that is going to be in their treatment facility. A large portion of it is in their collection system to reduce INI and so forth, but a pretty good portion of that's going to be at their treatment facility, and that, we're legally obligated and bound to have, you know, a portion of that cost. So if we keep prolonging the rate adjustment to where we should be, we're not going to be set up to be able to address those costs at that time, and we're going to set ourselves back. If you look at what the EPA recommends, they recommend two percent of the household income, median household income, to go towards sewer rates. We're not even close to that, and nor do I want to be. But that's what their recommendation is. If you look at surrounding communities, we're still, even with that nineteen percent increase, we're still far under what surrounding communities are paying for sewer rates at that point. So it's not that it's outrageous rates for a utility. If you think of the infrastructure, we're maintaining almost twenty-eight miles of sewer infrastructure, and outside of that, we're maintaining a facility to treat that waste. There's exponential cost on that, and if we prolong some of those repairs, it's just, it's going to catch up with us over and over. If we get to a point where we can actually pay our bills on time, and then do some of the repairs, then we're going to save costs in treatment over time and tighten our system. So, I urge council to pay back the general fund as quickly as possible, so we can actually take care of some of those INI issues. We're certainly going to have things that we find from this year, and like the town manager said, we don't have those items in the budget to be able to take care of right off, because I understand that we want to make this as lean as possible until we get on our feet with the system and caught up.
Mr. Courier. On the, it seems like I read in here somewhere where we have like... Mr. Courier. On the, it seems like I read in here somewhere where we have like, what, 27 miles of sewer lines or something? Okay. Of those miles, how many are force main and how many are not?
It's very little, well, comparatively speaking, there's very little force main currently.
Okay.
There's probably a half a mile of force main.
Right. So for the most part, this video documentation of these things is intended to find these areas of, you know, the infiltration and the, what do you call it, infiltration? What was the other one?
Inflow.
Inflow. Okay. I'm, I'm not sure what the difference would be between the two, but, so I, I share the same concern, you know, that you do and, you know, Mr. McPike, what the heck are we going to do if we find out, you know, that there is, you know, serious issues, more serious than what we, you know, think? I mean, it, it's, it's a huge concern. It really is. I mean, I, I'm not saying that we shouldn't find out what the issue is, but once we find out, I, I'll find it really, really, you know, difficult to ignore it and not spend money on it. And so that's the, you know, that's the situation we have and I, and I hope the rate payers understand that, that, you know, if and when this thing is completed or, or even, even before it's completed, I'm, I'm sure, you know, we'll be made aware of serious issues before they're done, that it's something that may not be able to wait. You know, we, you know, you know, it might be an imminent rate increase and a significant one, you know, we just don't know. So, thank you.
Councilor Marble?
Well, I want to agree with Councilor McAvoy on this issue and what we may find. Sean, I don't want to keep you up there forever. I actually have a question for us and the town manager and it's just academic. I'm not, I'm not favoring taking action based on the direction of my question. The questions are two things. One, how much does the quote sewer fund currently owe the general fund?
As of today, it's 801,666.
Okay. And for sake of argument, what are the consequences to the town of not paying back the general fund out of the sewer fund?
So I'm going to revert back to the year-end FY16 because that's where my answer will, will continue. So as of year-end FY16, it was 651,666. 651. So when the auditor reports on the general fund's unassigned fund balance, that 651,000 is part of that unassigned fund balance, which you'll recall is slightly more than $1 million. So basically, 2/3 of the equity of the town of Hamden is owed to the town of Hamden by the sewer fund. It's not the fault of any rate payer out there, except perhaps those who sat on the council for those 10 years. But, but the fact is that, that's, that's the fact. So for the town to, for instance, forgive that debt or forgive some part of that debt, that's an option that you would have, but it would come at a steep cost. It would significantly devalue the town itself.
Okay. So my follow-up question, not trying to get cute with finances or, or make anything more palatable than it is, but in the real world, what if we go down a road in which we do the diagnostics and then find out we've got $2 million worth of work to do or something? Would it make sense to, to at least anticipate as one choice that some of the money that in a normal year we would pay back to the general fund instead, we would go, no, we're going to put this into capital improvements because over the next five years, it saves the infrastructure and saves a lot of money?
I personally, I know Director Courier said, you know, pay back the general fund as, as quick as you can so that you can put the money toward operations and maintenance. As, sitting here as treasurer, I don't see it quite that way. I think a decision to defer some, you know, to either make a more modest payment or even to make no payment for a period of time is, is completely within the purview of the council as the policy-setting body. It will continue to show up on the balance sheet as it has for many years. The consequence of that to the general fund is that we're going to have to go to tax anticipation notes in order to stay current with our bills. But honestly, that, that is a headache and I don't think it's a, a great thing. But the actual dollar cost is, is pretty minimal, at least now in this interest rate environment. It's been maybe less than $5,000 a year between interest and bond counsel. So it's, it's not a huge problem. Lots of towns do it. So I think the decision, like I said, to, to either reduce or defer a payback entirely for a budget year would, is, is something you can reasonably weigh.
Thank you.
I, I, one additional point in terms of, that, that's been put on the table over the years and I think would be years to implement. So it's not going to be any kind of near-term fix. And given the market conditions may not be a huge help at all, it could even be counterproductive. But the idea of a impact fee ordinance is something that has been talked about for many years in this town. If that was put in place, it would generate a different revenue stream. But like I said, it's not a particularly strong market as is. So if you layer additional fees, that could simply reduce the potential of new development and, and it could be a self-defeating thing. But it's something that as a policy option, you need to be aware it's on the table.
Councilor Royce?
So, correct me if I'm wrong. So we went from 651 to 801. So $150,000 increase year over year owed to the general fund.
That's as of today. So in FY17, I had to borrow that money back in the summer and early fall because of debt service come due. But by the time, so we just sent out fourth-quarter bills about a week and a half, two weeks ago. Once that fourth quarter revenue completes, you know, in the next couple of weeks, I'll be able to pay that back entirely as well as pay back the 100,000 that was budgeted. So it looks worse at this moment than it will look at the end of June.
So we'll bring it down to about 550,000 then?
That's right.
And by not paying down or paying back, we're just pushing it out, correct? By not taking that 100,000 and paying that debt service, we're just going to, it's still, we still, it's still owed to the general fund.
It'll, it'll continue to show up in the audits until it's either paid back or formally forgiven.
Thank you.
Councilor Wall?
Just a quick question. Quick math tells me that if we leave everything the way it is and we take that 19% proposed increase, on the low end, the increase is about $4.60 a month and on the high end would be $11.20 per month for a household bill. Is that in the neighborhood?
Not being a human calculator, I'll be to trust your judgment on that. I, I would say, and I, I know everyone knows this, but it's, it's not just the increase, it's the compounded increase. So that's what we're sensitive to. But, I mean, if I compared what people were paying in FY15 versus what's proposed, it's, it's a more significant increase, but.
Okay. But last year, we had a very significant increase. The 19% increase is very minimal compared to what we did last year.
Compared to what we did last year, yes.
So I want to put the people at home that are watching a little bit at ease. I know we're throwing a lot of numbers out here and a lot of very large numbers. But what we're looking for, for an increase of 19% is not translating to hundreds and hundreds of dollars increase for the average payer. We're talking about a $4.60 in that neighborhood, up to $11.20 depending on how much you use on a monthly basis. So, and again, that's my quick math. So if it's $11.40, don't kill me. Thank you.
All this is based on the passing of this year's budget?
Based on the expense budget, the sewer expense budget. That's right.
So if we set and voted on this tonight, then pretty much you're going along with the budget for the sewer?
If the, and this is basically the revenue side of the budget. So I think, you know, the budget working meeting on the sewers two, two nights from now on Wednesday night. So if we went into that meeting with the rate set so, then that, that would be the expense budget. That doesn't mean, that doesn't presuppose the council springing forward that budget and voting it. So for instance, you could vote additional rates and then say, we disagree with how the expenses are proposed. We'd like to put more into capital reserve or we'd like to put less into staffing. So it's, they're linked, but it's, I mean, the authority rests with the council and it's two different sides of the budget. It's a little bit awkward because of rate setting. It, it doesn't fit as cleanly into the town budget. But yeah, I guess the counterpoint to that is if you came out of tonight and said, hold the line on rates, I would need to find 156,000 on the expense side. Obviously, that would come at the cost of any new personnel. That would be off the table. But of the non-personnel increase, 75,000 of that is debt service. So it's, you know, as I said in the memo, I, I firmly believe some level of increase is necessary. In fact, there's a reason I set the closing of the borrowing till tomorrow because I am very leery of closing that loan based on the current rate structure because I don't know if I would have any choice, you know, in paying that debt service but to borrow more from the general fund.
So my next question is, is we're paying the money back into the general fund. So in theory, fiber rights coming on board in another year, which should be adding quite a lot to our sewer billing. Thinking if we kind of help the public with the payback this year to the general fund, then next year, we can evaluate when fiber rights online to see how much they're contributing to help the sewer fund. That might kind of ease the pain for some people for a while, see what's, what we're going to have for revenue coming in and then reevaluate it again later. But from District Four, I guess it shouldn't really bother me because we don't have to pay sewer bills, but I can feel the pain for a lot of people that do. Councilor McPike?
Are we in fact getting 100,000 back into the general fund from this year?
Yes.
It is being put in. Now, if, if we run lean and we have access, that goes to, as a carryover, not back to the general fund?
It's, it's not specifically budgeted. So if there's more at the end of the year, I would let the council know that and, and look to you in terms of whether you want that to go into some kind of reserve, you know, capital reserve or toward the general fund or, or some other use.
Any other questions?
What do, what is the general rate that surrounding towns are paying for their sewer usage?
I think on general, it'd be closer to $700 a year, annual.
And our average person, our average taxpayer?
Right, right now, it's currently 477, but proposed at 568.
I think it'd be helpful for people to see, you know, like Bangor people are paying this much for 100,000.
You got those numbers now?
And I just want to commend Angus and the council. It, it's hard to have to pay down debts, but I like to hear that we are not just ignoring that for years, that the general fund was being sucked dry by, by the sewer fund. And like a responsible household, we need to pay back that debt. But we need to plan for the future also. So it's, it's not easy. But as a taxpayer, if I can say, yeah, I'm going to have to pay 19% more, but I'm still paying less than Bure or I'm still paying less than Bangor, that might mitigate the blow a little bit.
Thank you.
I, I would, just for anyone watching from home, if you go to hamdenmain.gov/sewer, there is a link there to a 2013 study by the Maine Rural Water Association, which has sewer rates for probably well over 100 municipalities.
Councilor Royce?
I, I just, and to your point, Mayor, on, you know, forget holding off a year on this 100,000 rebate. I, I hear what you're saying. The only challenge I have is what Director Courier just said in the sense that we, we could be looking at, we could, a bad situation next year and by not paying that back, it could be even worse. That's my concern.
Well, the thing is, is, so you, so you video the whole sewer and you find out you've got a huge amount of problems. You're not going to fix it all in one year.
Nope.
You're probably not going to fix it all in 10 years. And whatever you do, it's going to go to public referendum for a vote because it's going to be a huge amount of money. So, you know, we're sitting here thinking, yeah, this, well, we can find out what it is and we're going to fix it. Well, you might fix it, but it's going to take you a long time. It's no quick fix to this. I mean, we've been fixing sewers for a long time, not maybe as much as we should have, but it's, it's no easy. Yeah, we found out, we got all this and yep, we're going to have it fixed in two years. No, I don't think so.
You know, I just want to bring a little point here. I mean, Hamden's not unique in our Asian sewer system. This is something that's going on countrywide. These are issues that the entire country are looking at. Maybe not every single municipality, but listen to Washington, you know, the infrastructure upgrades that we need. So, I mean, I think we're a little bit ahead of the curve on some of the municipalities in addressing this now. And I think that we were kind of forced to by the situation that we were in and by having the new town manager investigate this and, and see just what the extent of it was. But we're certainly not alone in, in the predicament that we're in. And Mayor Ryder is correct. This is not something that's going to be fixed in one year. So, but I think it's very important that we address this as often as we have and as often now that we need to, just to the point of our citizen here tonight. So, thank you.
Councilor Marble?
Just a clarifying question for you. Were you suggesting conceptually that we not pay 100,000 back to the general fund?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say in 100,000. You know, we could cut, cut it to 50,000 or, you know, I, I don't know the numbers. I'm just trying to throw out an idea to.
Yep.
You know, and the other thing I think about is, you know, these, people that paid on the sewer bill, that money that came out of the general fund also was money they paid in taxes. So now they're getting, they're getting double debt, basically, because they got to pay it back. They already paid taxes, went into it, took it out. Now they got to pay that again. So, you know, it's a whole mess. It's just ugly right from the get-go. But, you know, I, I just have trouble keep going up and up and up and trying to make it as less painful, I guess. I mean, everybody knows it's going to be painful, but how bad?
I can run a scenario if we took the 100,000 out, kept other things equal, what that would mean.
I just wanted to also say that, you know, it's, what was stated before, we're not in that bad a shape compared to a lot of communities. My responsibility is to keep us out of the public's eye of being one of those bad communities with EPA and DEP. And I think we're doing a relatively good job. We're staying proactive. We're treating our system well with maintenance. We're maintaining what we have. And probably more than 75% of our system has been upgraded to plastic pipe. That's well ahead of many, many communities around the nation. So we're doing a good job. Some of the issues stem from right, the connection right at the house. The perimeter drain to the foundations are still tied in. That's private, private property. It's very hard to take town and address those issues. Bangor has a huge issue with private sources of inflow into the system. That's not infiltration into their system. That's inflow. That's coming directly into the system from a source, whether it's rainwater because they're a combined system, which we're not, but that's inflow. Infiltration seeps into the pipe or into the manholes. The inflow actually comes directly into the system from a raindrop hitting the ground. So the perimeter drains are a major issue. How we deal with that is going to be very challenging. I mean, that's, that's private property and so it's going to be a challenge. The structures or the infrastructure that we have in place is not in that, it's not in a bad shape. We do have some mains that need to be replaced, but you know, it's probably 20, 25% of the system that still needs to be replaced. A lot of that flow comes from private sources. That's going to be the hardest to take out. So to your point earlier, if we have 100,000 going to the general fund and we find some. and we find some major issues, if I can fix them right now and save, you know, an exponential amount in treatment costs, we're going to fix those first, I hope, and, you know, not pay as much to the general fund.
Counsel McAvoy?
So I'm presuming that if seventy-five percent of it has been upgraded fairly recently to plastic pipe, that the CCTV activity is going to take place where that, where there is not plastic pipe? And to begin with, first of all, right? I mean, am I correct?
Not necessarily.
Well, my, so my, my question is, why would you want to spend a lot of money at, from the beginning, at the beginning, on the least likely areas, you know, for infiltration?
It's a very good point. But the reason that I'm doing that is we have two major paving projects that are coming up in town, and I want to check the condition of the sewer under those so we do not get back into that. If there is an issue under that brand-new pavement that DOT is proposing along 1A or at Western Avenue, I want to make sure we fix those first before we have to dig back into the pavement that was just laid. And it looked pretty silly at that point.
Okay, just one more.
Did you have a comment?
Well, it was kind of along the same lines, like what can the clothes, the camera tell you? Does it literally see the amount of flow coming out of each person's?
The people watching from home can't hear you unless you go up to the mic, and you're making a good point.
So, don't go away because you're the person who needs to.
You're on the ball.
What does this study, and how does this study tell you where the possible problems are? And then, I like the idea of not digging up new pavement, but is there a strategic way to, to use that videography and measurement so that, geez, we found eighty percent of our problem by looking within a mile of where, where the Bangor sewer treatment is? Is there like a strategic plan? And how, how do you identify those sources of inflow and?
Infiltration.
Infiltration, thank you.
So the way it works to look at that is you want to TV the system at times of high groundwater and low use of the sewer system. So that way, you see the most infiltration or inflow in that system. So, you know, in the spring of the year is when you want to TV the system. So we need to start doing that very soon. And you want to do a lot of that work between nine PM and the next morning, when there are not significant flows coming into the system. So a lot of that work should be nighttime. And that would tell you if you see eighty gallons a minute coming out of one of the services, you know, there's, you know, it's, something's very wrong. So that's kind of how you, how you would judge the inflow and infiltration or issues with that system. It's the time of day that you TV and the time of year in the groundwater.
Okay, you got some numbers?
I do. So if we zero out the, for, for just FY18, zero out the payback to the general fund, ten dollars and thirty-five cents would, would cover the other budgeted costs. What you see up there is if there was a fifty thousand dollar payback in FY18, that would be ten dollars and ninety cents, which would be a twelve percent increase.
Comment?
The ten thirty-five is what percent?
I, I didn't run it.
No, it's fine.
Counsel Royal?
There would be a twelve percent increase on the sewer rates. That brings down the monthly, or the yearly increase on the lower end to thirty-four dollars and eighty cents, or roughly a little less than three dollars a month increase. And on the high end, a little more than six dollars a month increase to the sewer bill. Here, I'll, I'll walk up and show you where I'm looking.
Stop. Now, let's see. You can see it.
Be seated.
If I'm looking at this correctly, this is our current bill. This is what we're talking about with a twelve percent increase. The average rate payer would see thirty-four dollars and eighty cents as an annual increase. Divide that by twelve, it's a little less than three dollars a month as far as an increase on your sewer bill.
That's correct.
On the high end, with the twelve percent increase, you're going from seven twelve in your current bill right now, yeah, seven eleven on your current bill right now. You're coming up to seven ninety-five. Comes up to about eighty-four dollars, which is a little more than six dollars on your monthly bill. So it's, again, it's not like we're talking huge, huge, huge numbers. I know that we don't like to see increases, but we need to be diligent and make sure that we're heading in the right direction on this problem. The fifty thousand a year being paid back to the general fund, that's needed in the general fund too. Because if we don't have those funds in the general fund, that means we got to come up with fifty thousand somewhere else, or we have to increase the taxes or the mill rate to make up for that. Am I right about that?
Well, it, it kind of gets down to philosophically, how important is the unassigned fund balance? We know that the practical need for that is that you have enough cash flow year-round to not have to borrow to pay your bills. That more, kind of over the life cycle of a town, the unassigned fund balance is basically your, your equity, your insurance policy if something really goes badly and you have to, you know, outlay significant funds that are not budgeted. Your fund balance gives you kind of a security blanket. So that's where MMA recommends a ten to twelve percent. Hampton was down as low as seven point four percent at the end of FY15. We rebounded a bit to eight point four percent at the end of FY16, and we'll rebound further. But again, two-thirds of that is what the sewer owes the general fund. So it's not actually money in the bank.
Yeah, I, I get that part of it right there. I do like the idea of cutting down the one hundred thousand to fifty thousand this year. And once we get through this budget season, because there's a lot of other things on the plate for us to look at also. But I'm pretty comfortable with Ivan's suggestion that maybe fifty thousand back to the general fund and with a twelve percent increase. I, I like that scenario a lot better.
So the nineteen percent increase, was that eleven what?
That was eleven sixty, eleven sixty.
So seventy, seventy cent difference.
Any other comments?
I just want to caution the council that if we do reduce that percent increase that out of this CCTV and the other studies, that we find some issues. Like we're also doing, you know, a CSO master plan, and that's going to help us try to figure out how to reduce the CSO volumes that go out. We don't have very many CSO overflows, but EPA is looking at us to eliminate that CSO completely. And that's the CSO tanks down across from 140 Main Street North, across from the Water District. They would like to see those gone. So in order to do that, we have to take a significant amount of inflow and infiltration out of this system so we can send one hundred percent of our flows to Bangor every year without having any sewer overflows or anything else take place.
But realistically, the government would like everything to be perfect, but it's not going to be. And fifty thousand dollars, what are you really going to get done? You've got thirty-three thousand dollars in engineering costs, so we're probably weren't going to get much work done. But that's another issue for another day. So what do you want to do on this? You want to take a vote on the sewer, or do you want to go over all of them?
I'd, I'd suggest let's stay focused on the sewer and then move on to the rest of the fees ordinance.
Anybody else got any questions, concerns? Counsel McAvoy?
Just a comment. I, I would prefer we stick at the nineteen percent for this year, for right now. I almost, I don't want to say this year, I mean for right now, at this moment. I, I feel it's imperative that the money get back, paid back to the general fund. There's no question about that. But to, to think into the future what potential, you know, rate or fees that we might gather from, you know, fiberite or anybody else for that matter. Well, the danger in that is, the potential danger in that is, if that does not occur, we may be faced with a situation where, you know, instead of it going up nineteen percent, it's going to have to go up, whatever we subtract out of it this year, plus the additional for, for that next time. So it might be twenty-five, thirty percent next time. Whereas if it stays nineteen now, it might be nineteen next time. So I, I, I'm just, you know, concerned about, you know, giving, you know, people the, you know, an impression that, you know, that their rights, that their rates might ever go down. I'm, I'm guessing that's not going to happen. But they are going to continue to go up. And I, I just feel that, you know, at nineteen percent, the, you know, the overall increase in their yearly amount that they pay, you know, is it a lot? Well, no, it's not. Is it, you know, significant to some individuals? Of course it is. We already know that. It, it is. But by the same token, either they're, you know, either the rate for the sewer rate goes up or the mill rate for the, you know, for the, for the property tax goes up. Either way, that, that amount of money is still going to come out of somebody's pocket at some point. And I just prefer that it come from the user of the service. And I just, you know, I, I just think it's not fair to them to, you know, to give someone the impression that we can shuffle stuff around and, and, you know, reduce this overall rate. Because that's not going to happen. I'm sorry, that's just not going to happen. Thank you.
Do we have a motion then?
I, I make a motion that we change the rate to the nineteen percent as suggested by the town manager and the current budget.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Moving on to the other rates in the proposed fees ordinance? Let me take a break. Okay, yeah, we'll stop and take a five-minute break and then come back. Okay, welcome back. Now we'll continue on with the fees ordinance. So instead of going down through these each line by line, if anybody has a question with any of the rest of these fees that are being adjusted, you could mention it and for discussion, or otherwise, we'll vote to accept the fee changes that are in front of you.
I make a motion we accept the fee changes that are in front of us?
Second.
Public comments? Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Okay, the next item tonight is item three, nominations. First item, 3A, is referral from Planning and Development. Counsel McPike?
Planning and Development Committee sent forward the application of Dr. Anthony Ing to serve on the Historic Preservation Committee. Dr. Ing was at our meeting and described the fact that he was interested in the community that he moved into and had a particular interest in Hampton, was very interested in understanding the historic part of it and what his duties would be. We unanimously agreed to, to his application and sent it on. And I would like to make a motion that we appoint Anthony Ing to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item is 3B, a referral from Services Committee for the reappointment of Susan O'Brien.
The Services Committee voting unanimously, and I would move reappointment of Susan, Susan O'Brien to the Laura Hoyt Pool Board of Directors. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item is 3C, appointment of Thomas Doherty to the Planning Board from an alternate member to a full member, a referral from Planning Board. I guess that was discussed the other night in the meeting, and that was the general consensus from the Planning Board. So any, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Thomas Doherty to the Planning Board as an alternate for the full member. As a full member, from alternate to full member. Thank you.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item is the warrant for RSU 22 Budget Validation Referendum. The next item is the warrant for RSU 22 budget validation referendum of the Town Clerk, Paula Scott. We'll explain that.
It's basically just approval of the council of the notification method to the public on the fact that there is an election on June 13th regarding the school budget. It's just a simple endorsement of the posting process.
Thank you. I'll send that around so everybody can sign that. Okay, under all business, we have none. Okay, I guess we need to vote on a piece of paper to send around saying we're going to have a vote.
What do you need for a motion?
I don't know, to accept the warrant for the RSU 22 budget validation.
Make a motion, we accept the warrant for the RSU 22 budget notification.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
There's one copy. There's three. There are three copies.
So the next item, under new business, is 5A, referral from Finance Committee. Council Wild.
In finance tonight, we had a motion and a referral to the council here for the award of a contract for the design, engineering, and permitting for pool and municipal building site. Forgive me, I forgot the name of the engineering firm.
Woodard and Curran.
Thank you. Woodard and Curran, to be approved, and it was unanimous. So I make a motion that we accept the contract award for the design, engineering, and permitting for the pool and municipal building site for Woodard and Curran in the amount of $15,000.
That's later.
Oh, we didn't need to do the, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item is 5B, also a referral from Finance Committee. Council Wild.
And this is the second part of that. From the Finance Committee, we approved to move this to the council, and I make a motion that we approve the authorization for the expenditure of $15,470 from the REC area reserve account, account number 3-767-00, for the contract for design, engineering, and permitting for pool and municipal building site.
Second.
Public comments? All those in favor? All those opposed? Next item under new business is 5C, is another request from the referral from Services Committee. Council Marble?
We could go with the Services Committee. We reviewed the Recreation Department Director's request for this funds for the purchase of field maintenance equipment, and in essence, these are adaptive mechanisms to go on the John Deere tractor we already have, allowing REC and Public Works working together, I believe, to do some field maintenance rather than having to sub it out. So I will make a motion for authorization for the expenditure of $6,179.89 out of the REC clearing account for the purchase of field maintenance equipment.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Any public comments? All in favor? Up to the mic, please.
Just wanted to say that I will make sure that that equipment is going to fit that machine, but if we were to replace that machine at some point in the future, that it would be generic equipment that could be utilized. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item is 5D, referral from Finance Committee. Council Wild?
Yes, I make a motion for the authorization for the expenditure of up to $2,900 out of the Equipment Reserve Account, account number 3-717-00, for the purpose of renting an excavator.
Second.
Any public comments? Discussion?
This is ongoing work, I believe, for our Public Works Department in ditching and the water flow that we need to constantly stay up on top of for the community.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the next item, under new business, 5E, referral from Finance. Council Wild?
Okay, I make a motion that we authorize for the expenditure of $65,875.98 out of the Streets and Roads Reserve Account, account number 3-761-00, for the purpose of resurfacing roads.
Second.
Public comments? Discussion?
This is something that was approved on last year's budget. This is simply approving our town manager and our Public Works Department to actually spend the funds to continue with our road upkeep.
Council Marble?
I may not be fully grasping it, but my takeaway, my sense is that this is state-of-main funding that comes in as a match to what we're doing in town.
Any other comments?
That is correct. It's in the same fund account. Thank you.
And just to let everybody know, we have a list of some of the roads, and Public Works Director Curry is here if I make a mistake, but we have a list, and some of the roads on that paving list are Hopkins Road, Emerson Drive, Francis Drive, Lindsay Way, Sophie Lane, Jay's Way, Highland Ridge, Severance Street, Ruth Avenue, I would assume, and the Pond Road. Is that correct? Just so the public has an idea of where we're headed this year with roads. Any other discussion?
I would just add, once we put out the RFP and get bids back and have that solidified, that's what we're hoping to get done, but once we have the final contracted roads, we'll have either Kyle or Karen put together a nice map, we'll put that out on social media, or if people have questions, they can always just call the Public Works Department.
Very good. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Moving on, the next item on the agenda tonight is Committee Reports. Services Committee. Council Marble?
Services Committee met last Monday night, and some of the contents of the agenda tonight at this meeting have reflected that. We also got an update on the broadband grant from Kyle Severance, our GISIT specialist, who's optimistic about what the near future may bring in terms of potential access of broadband to more of the town. We went over recommendations regarding vendors for the design, engineering, and permitting for the pool and municipal building site, as we discussed tonight. We reviewed in workshop at the end of the meeting FY18 budget for the bus. We had a request from Kiwanis, basically to help them continue their mission, which I think began in town in either 1958 or '59. They're facing general demographics like a lot of organizations are in terms of an aging membership who on their own is not necessarily able to maintain or raise the same amount of money they used to be able to. So the town manager graciously agreed to continue discussion with them at this point to see if we can define a way in which we can help them stay in business, because they provide a lot of services for a lot of other organizations in town. We approved or made a recommendation to approve the money from the REC clearing account for the field maintenance equipment, it's just voted. We had a discussion about the town, use of town property, farmers' markets, and order of preference based on geography of where a business is established that was perhaps helpful, at least in terms of setting up or teeing up a conversation that we should probably have this coming winter. And we handed out, but didn't really review fiscal year 18 Services Committee priorities for policy work, which we will get into again at next month's meeting.
Thank you. Finance Committee. Council Wild?
Yes, previous meeting was on May 1st, 2017, where we had the consideration of the tax-exempt revenue obligation bond. The motion passed 6-0 with Councilor Saroyes-Vicusin himself in the matter. Consideration of proposed amendments to the fees ordinance, which we voted on here tonight, which we heard quite a bit about, on at least part of it. We also had the request for the authorization for the expenditure of $277 for the Recreation Reserve Account for the purpose of paying the Bangor Daily News for advertising, for the pool site design, engineer, and in permitting RFP, which we also discussed a little bit here tonight. That motion was passed 7-0. We also discussed the authorization of $251 out of the Municipal Building Reserve Account for the Hamden Electric for ongoing lighting repairs here at the town office. The motion passed 7-0. Request for the expenditure of $1,756 out of the IT Reserve Account for the purpose of purchasing three Windows tablet computers for the fire department and ambulance. That was a lengthy discussion, and it did actually pass 7-0 in favor. We also had the authorization for 1325 in the Personnel Reserve Account for the purpose of offsetting costs associated with payroll expenses for a temporary part-time worker. That motion passed 7-0. Consideration of council position on LD 1312, which was a resolve to investigate extending passenger rail service to Central Maine. That one was discussed and a little bit more split. It passed with a 5-2 vote, with two counselors in opposition. And the bulk of what we had on that particular night was a presentation and discussion of the fiscal year 2016 audit by the Mr. Wadman, I believe it was, Mr. Wadman. We didn't have a lot of questions. It was very thorough in his presentation. And then our town manager actually wrapped that up on that particular night with any questions that we might have had, which again, we didn't have a lot because they were extremely thorough. That's all I have.
Thank you. Planning and Development. Council Mike Pike?
Planning and Development met on Wednesday, May 3rd. Other than what took place here tonight, we had an update on MRC Fiberite. We discussed the fees ordinance which we passed tonight, and solid waste flow control. Our meetings are held to as short as we can because that Wednesday night was the first night of our budget meetings that we started. We will meet this Wednesday night. I'm not sure what we have on the agenda yet, but again, it will be a short meeting due to the fact that we are in budget, and piggybacking on our meeting will be budget meetings. That was it.
Thank you. Infrastructure. Councilor Saroyes?
We have not had an infrastructure meeting since the last council meeting. Our next meeting will be on the 29th of May.
Thank you. And the next item, yes, sir?
22nd.
Pardon, 22nd. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report.
Just a couple of items. I want to remind everybody that this Saturday is the Hamden Garden Club's perennial plant and pie sale. That is their largest fundraiser of the year. That runs from 8:00 to 12:00 at Harmony Hall on Kennebec Road. Because of the rescheduled stream cleanup that Mayor Ryder referred to earlier, those events slightly conflict. The stream cleanup, though, does not begin until 9:00 a.m., so I would suggest people can start their day at the plant and pie sale at 8:00, and then come over to the stream cleanup at 9:00. I wanted to also let the council know, we did have a pre-construction meeting earlier today on the MRC Fiberite, so you'll hear more detail about that on Wednesday, but it was a very full room. We had all of the utilities present, not just water and sewer, but also the pipeline people. So that was very good, and Director Curry and I were able to have a good conversation after the meeting about the pool site, and so I think that was a good contact for that. And as Council Mike Pike knows, there is a meeting this Thursday of the Environmental Trust Committee. What you see before you is the packet for that meeting. This is what seven years of backup receipts look like, and that totals, the requested funding before the Environmental Trust Committee, not all of which may pass, but it totals $360,000, and that constitutes both FY17 expenses as well as the last seven years because the Trust Committee had not been active in processing expenses for about seven years. So we've documented all of the eligible expenses during that time. We've met with the committee a couple of times, but this is now when they'll receive all of the backup, and the effect of the approval of those funds would be essentially a transfer of funds from designated fund balance, meaning the trust, to unassigned fund balance. So this is one piece of a bigger effort, going back about a year and a half, to help bring the town back on sound financial footing.
Thank you. Next item tonight is Councilor Comets. Councilor McAvoy?
Thank you. I think two weeks ago I said, "Spring has sprung." I don't recall saying that it wasn't going to be a wet one, but I have voiced my displeasure, and I've been assured that, starting tomorrow, things are going to look up. So we'll see. But I want you to remember, shop local and buy American. Good night, Hamden.
Councilor Comier?
I'll keep it short. No comment.
Council Marble?
No comment.
Council Wild?
For those of you that stuck it out until almost 9:00 o'clock instead of switching over to game seven in the Celtic series, I thank you, but go watch the game now. Thanks. Good night, Hamden.
Council Mike Pike?
No comment.
Councilor Saroyes?
No comment.
I just want to remind people again what Council Mike Pike said. Wednesday night after PND, we're going to be working on the budget again, so we encourage people to show up, get involved, ask questions. As you can see here tonight, we have a citizen that got involved and asked questions, and hopefully we made some improvements that helped, and everybody came to a mutual agreement, and I think it worked out good. It shows, you know, maybe that the council is listening to the public, and we're glad to have the public come and address those questions to us so we can work together and make it work for everybody in town. So with that, I have no other comments. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Second.
And good night, Hamden.